Cleveland Heights Libraries, City of Cleveland Heights and City of University Heights. Wednesday, the 29th of June, 2022. We want to express condolences to Scott Gaynor, who cannot be here because he is attending the funeral of his uncle. In his stead, Dan Heinz will call the roll for the school board.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Me, here. Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Thank you.
Does anybody else need to call roll for official minutes?
I do. Ms. Carlisle?
Here.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Here.
Ms. Fuhellen?
Here.
Mr. Gervais?
Here.
Ms. DiWamoto? Mr. McTighe? Mr. Turekia? Thank you.
Okay, wonderful.
So, Cleveland Heights, sorry.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Cobb?
Russell?
Here.
Maddox?
Here.
Kuta is excused, Moore is excused, Hart is excused, Larson?
Here.
Cobb, present.
Ms. Lewis, I'll go ahead and call roll for University Heights. Mrs. Sax?
Here.
Mrs. Blankfeld? Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mrs. Blankfeld and Mr. Cooney?
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Gould, is there a second?
Secuted.
Second by Mr. King. Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Here, they are excused, thank you. And Mayor Brennan is here.
Thank you. Now that we're done with the formalities, this evening's meeting is going to be a little different than the one we held three months ago. And we're just going to have very brief updates from each of the four government organizations, and then we are going to go into more interesting and useful discussion of creating working groups around areas of common interest. So, Ms. Kirby, if you would start, please, with a brief update.
Good evening, everyone. And I do want to remind everyone in attendance that if you go to Board Docs, we post the reports that I give every month on Board Docs. You can receive more timely information in between these meetings in addition to our work session presentations. Last night, we held a work session, and during that work session, we reviewed the school performance around, the district's performance around absenteeism, early literacy, and the third area was grades. We noted big challenges around attendance largely driven by COVID protocols, quarantine protocols, the Omicron variant in particular. So, we will be engaging in a district-wide attendance campaign so that we can build on some successes that we did start to see as the weather got better and Omicron got better for next year. Really promising early literacy data, so we're really excited about that because, as you may know, we do have a goal in our 2026 plan to be at 100% literacy proficiency for our third graders. And so, it's nice to see that our K-2 students, as they are emerging out of a challenging year, have more students that are on track from a literacy perspective. And then, we also see better performance around our student grades. The other assessments come in over the summer, so we looked at the data that we did have available, and will continue to, you know, monitor progress towards our strategic plan. The other thing I want to celebrate is the class of 2022. They graduated on June 1st. Our seniors earned collectively $16.2 million in scholarship awards and counting, so that's a $2 million increase from the previous class, and we're excited to see that number grow. We know that this is a great, it really speaks to the hard work of the staff at the high school. And that scholarship piece is really important because we do want to make sure that our students and their families have the resources so that they can continue on post-high school. The last thing, last couple of things, Tiger Camp, we're in summer two of Tiger Camp here at the high school. It's a little shorter than last year, so it's a four-week session versus a six-week session, broken up into two parts. We also have our summer school sessions and academic enrichment opportunities for students. We have about a little over 380 students who are here for free, getting both academic and also extracurricular artistic enrichment. And then, finally, we're excited that we do have our board training on equity that's going to be happening tomorrow. We have actually, and I know this is one of the working groups I think we'll be talking about, but we have for next year our partnering with ICS, which is Integrated Comprehensive Systems, and they kicked off a lot of the equity training work with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. They were one of our early partners, and they're going to be our partner in comprehensive equity training. And so, we're excited about, excited about that. The last piece that, and you might want to, I know probably, this isn't brief, sorry, but this is my last thing. The last piece that I would say is, we really are looking for academic tutors for next year. And so, we'll be sharing information even further and wider than we normally do, and we'll send out some information that I'm asking everyone to take back to your communities, your friends, your stakeholders, because we have lots of opportunities, but in particular, academic tutors to assist us in the schools. So, there'll be more information about that.
I think we can talk about that some more later on when we're talking about employment and workforce stuff. Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
Yes, and these are paid opportunities, not volunteer opportunities.
Yes. Okay.
Malia, you need a microphone.
Oh, we're sharing. Ms. Levin?
I'm going to defer to Gabe Crenshaw, our board president.
Sure thing.
Good evening. The library is pursuing mediation with the Coventry Peace Campus and is offering new leases to existing tenants. The building is not for sale. However, we are anxious to start fundraising for the replacement of the Coventry Playground for which we have completed plans for. In the fall, we will be offering support for the schools and students in our programs such as homework help for K-8 students. We have a partnership with CSU and Case for drop-in homework help at the Lee Road Branch beginning the third week of September, Monday through Thursday at 3:30. We will have a September Band Book Month where bingo cards with challenge books, prizes for any participants. We will have a panel discussion on September 23rd at 5:30 PM to discuss how community members, schools, and libraries can support access to diverse materials. Panelists will be from the ACLU, LGBT Center, and Colors Plus Youth Center. We will also have fall classes tailored for students in grades 4th through 8th for spotting fake news, which will have engaging 30- to 40-minute classes on how to evaluate news sources. We will also offer Research Basics Class, which is a one-to-two-part class on accessing databases, search tips, evaluating sources that fit research needs, and these can be done in schools or at the Heights Libraries. We also have class trips that are available to Heights Libraries for Storytime for K-3, Scavenger Hunt for younger grades, which is a fun and excellent way to learn about the library. We have library card sign-ups, research help, and you can take a tour of our collections. We also have book collections for teachers, so teachers can call any Heights Library, and we can order or put on hold specific titles or general topics. The Noble Branch renovation and addition design has begun, and another community meeting was held last night. Next month, we will be advertising for a construction manager at risk. We anticipate breaking ground next spring with completion sometime in the spring and summer of 2024. The Coventry Branch renovation should be complete by early September. And finally, Lee Road has opened a new local history room and a new steam lab for science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crenshaw. Hang on, I'm writing as quickly as I can, and I probably missed half of what you said.
We can send it to you.
Okay, thank you. That way, we can, we could actually post those notes up on Board Docs for the public. That would be great, thank you. The City of Cleveland Heights?
All right, I suppose I will begin. Very briefly, just wanted to run through some of the development projects that we are currently working on. Top of the Hill is nearing completion. We still are on track and expect to open by the end of the year and start bringing in the first tenants this fall. Beyond that, CLM, the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook Project, is still in sort of the financing stage, figuring out the financing thus far. We are still in negotiation right now with the school district about how that financing will take shape related to a possible TIF and school compensation package, and we're working through that. And Taylor Tutor, which the developer was kind enough to bring a presentation to the school district a bit earlier this year, just maybe a few weeks ago, is just in the beginning stages, but it is a combination of a preservation, a historic preservation project, and a district revitalization project in the Taylor neighborhood, in that business district. I urge you all to take a look at the renderings, the concept is really quite exciting. Beyond that, we are going to be beginning our ARPA Community Engagement, Public Engagement Strategy relatively soon. We'll be starting with public meetings and getting public input this, in the next month. So, I'm looking forward to reaching out to you all with more specific data on that so that you can provide, not University Heights, I suppose, but the library and the school districts, so you can provide some input as well, and possibly provide some notice to your networks so that we can maximize on the public engagement for our ARPA dollar Beyond that, I think I could, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, Kane Park season has begun. If you, if you missed School of Rock, I feel very sad for you, it was an amazing show. But there are more wonderful things happening at Kane Park now, so please take a look, kanepark.com, to see if there are any shows that strike your fancy. And additionally, we will be having our Kane Park Arts Fest starting on the 8th, 9th, and 10th of July. It will be a wonderful time, I'm sure, and additionally, if you're interested in learning more about the Taylor Tutor Project, that will be an occasion to get some face time with the developers and see what we have in store for how that development may impact Kane Park as well. We have our Heights United Summer Camp starting, and you can check out chparks.com to get some more information about that and about our new partnership with Urban Swim to produce our Learn to Swim program, so I urge you to go take a look at that as well. And beyond that, I think I'll turn it over to the council president, well, council vice president, president for these purposes at this meeting tonight.
Thank you, appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to speak to you all. If I could, I'll just comment on some of the legislative highlights that have occurred in our city since we were last together. I think you all know Susanna Neerman O'Neal. We passed a resolution naming the city's atrium in her honor of 40-year service to the city. We, as the mayor just mentioned, the Taylor Tutor Plaza, we passed a resolution authorizing him to negotiate with the developer for that project to go forward. We passed a resolution authorizing the city to participate in NOPEC's Green Community Choice Program for our electrical aggregation program, where the city's content of electricity will be from 100% renewable energy sources effective the first of the upcoming year. We passed a resolution opposing House Bill 616. We passed a resolution opposing proposed Senate Bill 123 and proposed House Bills 480 and 598. As you know, all collectively seek to prohibit essentially all abortions in Ohio. We passed a resolution condemning Ohio House Bill 454, which prohibits affirming healthcare for transgender youth. We passed legislation amending the City's Fair Practices Act to prohibit conversion therapy by mental health professionals. We passed legislation enacting a new ordinance, a new ordinance to prohibit persons that contract with the city from having discriminatory practices against all protected groups. We passed legislation providing for paternity leave for city employees. And with the upcoming Fourth of July holiday coming up, we passed legislation that will continue to make the discharge of most fireworks illegal in the city. And we're currently interviewing for a clerk of counsel, which was a newly created position as a result of a charter amendment passed in the last May election. And all of these resolutions and legislation was done in cooperation with the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And the City of University Heights?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ms. Lewis. University Heights is getting greener. On Earth Day 2021, I signed the 30-by-30 pledge seeking to reduce University Heights' carbon emissions by 30% by 2030. And this week, I signed the council resolution making University Heights a power, clean, future Ohio community, and they will help the city find ways to achieve that goal. So, thank you to Councilmember Brian King for shepherding this through and helping to cultivate the relationship with PCFO to promote sustainability in University Heights. Yesterday, I signed into law the mandatory forfeiture of any instrumentality, including firearms, used in the commission of a crime in University Heights. Thank you to Councilmember Justin Gould for his work on this, and to Shaker Heights Municipal Court Judge Anne Walton Keller. University Heights now has a new peddlers and solicitors ordinance in effect. Under the new law, peddlers and solicitors going door-to-door in our city must apply for a permit with the police department, await a background check, and pay a $90 fee. If a permit is issued, it must be displayed photo side out. There are limited hours that permit holders may go door-to-door. This ordinance does not apply to canvassers for social, political, or religious causes, does not apply to poll or census takers. It also does not apply to minors out on behalf of a youth organization like Girl Scouts selling cookies, or local, public, or private school drives. It also does not apply to charitable begging. This legislation also adopts and enrolls University Heights in the NOPEC No-Knock Program, which keeps a Do Not Knock registry, and one may register for that at www.blocthenock.com. Like many cities in northeastern Ohio, including Cleveland Heights, the City of University Heights has opted out of Ohio's new fireworks law. As a result, the use of commercial-grade fireworks in other than licensed and permitted displays remains illegal in the City of University Heights. Residents are asked to plan accordingly as they plan to celebrate the holiday weekend. The city's annual Juneteenth celebration was a resounding success. One year ago, Jeff Engelbrecht, the city housing and community development director, took up the charge to form a citizens committee and plan the event. They came through in a big way, and planning is already underway for next year's event. Our summer concert series has been a success so far this year with great concerts by The Michael Weber Show and Flannel Planet. The music continues tomorrow at John Carroll University with the annual patriotic show by the University Heights Symphonic Band, which will be at 7:00 PM at the Hamlin Quad, located directly behind the Dolan Science Center. The summer concert series will continue through July and into August. I won't go over the full schedule here. But finally, on Sunday, October 2nd, we will host our third-ever Fall Fest at Waltz. We're planning on having 100 artists and vendors, plus food trucks and activities for the kids. There'll be live entertainment from The Whizbang Circus, Diana Chittister, and in case you feel like you're missing them right this moment at Wade Oval Wednesday, we will also have Carlos Jones and the.
Oh, great.
So, work on University Square continues, more on that another day. And John Carroll University will be before our city planning commission next week, a week from tomorrow, with their site plan for their proposed new fieldhouse. For report from council, Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss. Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. Legislatively, the mayor mentioned that there were some very major ordinances that were just passed. In addition, the Joint Facilities and Infrastructure Committee has been meeting to formalize a plan to go ahead with new facilities. The council has authorized a zoning review, the first in many, many decades, and we're anxious to get that started. We are also working on a robust strategic plan, which will begin in September. This is also something that we have looked forward to. And finally, we have a comprehensive IT overhaul, which will assist the city in many areas, including community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and guess what? We're still on schedule. That's good. There were two things at our meeting three months ago that I wanted to follow up on in particular, and it sounds like from your reports that actually we don't need to hit House Bills 616, et cetera. Thank you to Mr. Cobb for sending the resolution that the City of Cleveland Heights passed in opposition to 616. I got that today, so thank you.
Malia? The library did also pass a resolution, it was sent to Columbus, and I will send ours to you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
616 and 327.
Right. And nobody knows what's going to happen with these particular bills. The last I heard, the House may meet on September 14th and 15th, the Senate may meet the following Wednesday and the Wednesday after that in September. So, nobody actually knows what's going on because they're not telling us.
If I may, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Having spoken with a lobbyist for the Mayor's and Managers Association, doesn't appear any of these bills are going anywhere fast, which is something I think we could all be happy for.
Well, that's good. And, you know, perhaps sending individual resolutions in opposition from lots of small government organizations all over Ohio is having an impact. That's why we do this, right, to try to get them to pay attention to the will of the people. So, good, thank you. Workforce development, employment was a big topic the last time we met, and that's why when we met last Sunday to put together the agenda, that was the first thing that cropped up as, as the topic for a work group, because I think it would be very beneficial to both communities and all of our citizens if we could work together and achieve whatever we decide we need to achieve in order to improve both the development and the employment and get these things meshed. So, Ms. Kirby, do you want to talk a little bit more about the school district's search for tutors, and then we can see how these things connect to everybody else?
Yeah. We have needs for, in addition to the academic success tutors, we have consistently had challenges in positions like lunch aids, cleaners, some members of our operational staff, and substitute teachers.
Bus driver.
And bus drivers. And so, I feel like we can do a better job of trying to tap into members of our communities who may have interest in these particular positions. If you don't know, to go to a particular part of the website, it may not even be, people may not have knowledge that we have these needs. And so, it's helpful to hear some of the planned events, the festivals, the concerts, because I can share that information with my team, and we can have people out there passing out flyers, sharing information as well, just, you know, to kind of, to be another, another way to get the information out. There have been some local community organizations and religious organizations that I've been meeting with who have also agreed to kind of help spread the word in that capacity. What I don't know is if there are some other formal, formal things we should be thinking about that perhaps you all use to help with that. I remember in our last conversation, I think there were some, some of our other entities were also, you know, trying to fill positions too, so I don't think we're unique in this, but it is something that I, I hope, you know, as a group, we can talk through, talk through strategically.
Yes?
Just throwing this out there, just as curiosity, have we ever discussed possibly doing a joint job fair for all of the jobs between our agencies and organizations and doing that at a community event that way? Because that might be helpful.
I think it makes a ton of sense when, you know, I know that Cleveland Heights has been looking for folks for, to fill vacancies at Kane Park for quite a while. We struggle with some of our positions. Yeah, I think that's very low-hanging fruit.
Well, I think there's an opportunity to, I don't, you're making me forget that, with like a joint job fair, but also just a branding of not like, do you want to work for the schools, or do you want to work for the library, but do you want to work in this community? And so, then it becomes, okay, like, maybe this isn't a fit, I really wanted this job, but there's a similar job over here that still keeps me in this community that I, that I love or I'm interested in. So, I don't have any specific ideas for that, but, I mean, I know when I search for a job, it's always by like zip code, like, show me five to 10 miles away. I don't want to go very far, so.
Yeah, like a live here, work here.
Right, live here, work here, exactly. And, and it also means that we would be attracting people who want to make their community a better place, right? Because if you want to work for one of your local entities, that's, that's a sign of commitment and engagement, which makes for a better fit for these jobs. So, that's a great idea. I would like to propose that, that the people who want to be on the Workforce Development and Employment Work Group have, take the, a joint job fair as their first project, because I think low-hanging fruit, yes, but it could be incredibly successful and have an impact, a positive impact for all of us. So, let's circle back to that after we've hit a little bit on the other topics, and then we'll be able to sort of sort ourselves like a sorting hat for like which is the best fit for people.
Malia?
Yes?
We focused, obviously, on, on youth employment, and we did follow through, and we have two YOU interns at the library this summer. I met the one yesterday who's working at Noble, and coincidentally, she wants to be an architect, though she attended our, our planning meeting for the Noble Branch. And we also hired two tech interns, and those tech intern jobs are available every summer. And one person, one of the children goes to Hightide, the other goes to, I'm spacing out, another private school, but they both live in the community. And I could foresee us having those tech ambassadors at all of the branches next summer, so we're definitely going to expand. And then, of course, there's always page jobs. So, we're just, we're just going to keep chugging away as we can, but encourage your kids at the school or just to keep us in mind if they're looking for an eight-to-10-hour-a-week job.
That's wonderful, thank you. And the page jobs are year-round, correct?
Yes, yeah, they're not seasonal. We'd like them to stay, and that's why we can accommodate football games and other school activities, and we say eight-to-10 hours. That works well for us, too. We have work all day, you know, from nine in the morning till nine at night.
That's great. Whereas your YOU and the tech interns are.
Are summer.
Specifically, summer positions. Are those full-time?
No, I think they're 25 hours.
Okay, but that's decent.
Yeah.
For, you know, for a young person, that's, that's.
May I ask what the age cutoff is, what that is?
For us, page, they have to be 16 or have a work permit. And the YOU were 16 to 24.
Okay.
And the tech ambassadors were high school students. I don't know if we, I don't know how young we went, but some of the, it doesn't really matter if you're good with people and you understand computers, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure they have to have a work permit.
Ms. Russell?
Yes, Mayor, there is an organization out there as well called Verge that is, has a grant, and they were also hiring youth from the age of 18 to 24 for businesses as well as cities. And they are actually footing the bill for their pay. So, it's 20 hours a week, 18 to 20 years old, and they can get a grant, and it's a partnership, it's a mentoring program, where they actually foot the bill for the cost, and all you have to do is actually do. to do is actually do an evaluation of a student and there's a job.
And what's the name of that? I'm sorry, Ms.?
Verge.
Verge?
Yes, I can send you the information.
Okay.
Right, I saw, I saw something about that in the newspaper. And is that ongoing all summer?
Yes.
Okay. Does it continue during the school year as well or only during the summer?
Right now, the grant is for just the summer, but they're looking into a grant for all year round. And I'll be in contact with them on the, I think, next week. I have a Zoom meeting with them, with the radio show who is actually, they're expanding. So, it's a lot of opportunity there. Where actually the cities, different cities and school districts can actually use them so it won't come out your budget. As well as the library.
Yeah, that's, YOU does that, too. They pay for the salary.
Yes.
Very nice.
Can I just have a question? And I don't think this is anything that's come up before, but has this group between the four sort of, like governmental organizations here, ever thought of committing to a minimum wage, a standard minimum wage that we would all kind of commit to? I think that that could be, you know, that could be helpful, especially right now as wages are going up, inflation is going up, as a way to attract people to our jobs. I know that in a lot of positions here, they are governed by union contracts, but that doesn't mean that we can't up wages in the middle of those. You know, and I think that we would be able to draw people from the private sector and drive up wages in those jobs as well, creating sort of a mini boom in the Cleveland Heights, University Heights area. Also thinking about requiring contractors who work for us to do any kind of projects to, you know, abide by certain standards. So, if you're coming to work in Cleveland Heights or University Heights, you're going to be working under certain good, if you're going to be doing anything either in the public sector or contracted out from the public sector, that it's going to be done under a certain high standard. Either that or, you know, have some sort of union recognition requirement in contracts.
It's not something that we have discussed as a joint organization. It's something that would definitely require a lot of thought and coordination and be a long-term project because we have four unions. I don't know how many you have, but it's complicated. You have zero unions.
We've got three.
You have three. How many unions?
Yeah, we have Well, no, four.
You have four bargaining units?
Well, yeah, we have four bargaining units, but we have three unions.
Okay, anyway, so, so it would, again, it's something that we have not discussed and if we discuss it in the future, it's, has to be done in a very careful, methodical way in order for it not to mess up any of these agreements. So, that's certainly something which the working group could explore. There's no way of predetermining what the outcome of that would be right now because it's like, we haven't talked about it. So, thank you, Max. The other big areas of joint collaboration, potential collaboration is facilities sharing and public resources because we are all taxing bodies and our communities are paying for us to do stuff for them. And this comes up particularly around sports facilities, whether it be pools or tennis courts or fields. It also comes up with use of meeting rooms, like this one, for example, which is not technically a meeting room.
Pretty nice place to meet.
It's a nice place to meet. And so, this is something there where I think we could do some productive work that would benefit all of our citizens. Anybody have first-level thoughts yet about this?
Well, the library allows any of government-affiliated organizations to use our meeting rooms for free through our booking system and we've been extending like a youth baseball league that's organized by parents or youth football. If they identify themselves as working with students within the community, we'll let them reserve a meeting room for two hours for free to do sign-ups and that. So, we'd never charge anyone from either of the cities or any student-affiliated organization for using any of our meeting rooms, so.
And if I remember correctly, you also allow nonprofits to use meeting rooms for free because I've booked them under the
The only people that pay are if it's a business that is a nonprofit, like, you know, a homeowners association or a financial advisor wants to meet with clients. And even then, typically, we only charge $30 an hour for the use of the room. So, it's very cost-effective.
Yes?
Yeah, one thing I would like to say, first of all, thank you for letting us use your facilities for our council meetings. You know, our city council chambers is not accessible, so we want to thank you for extending that invite. And thank you to the library for letting us use your meeting rooms for committee meetings. One thought I did have is we're going, we're undergoing a facilities review and a needs assessment. It would actually be nice, since we have all the government bodies together in that work session, that we could do perhaps even an inventory of spaces that we, that we can extend to other government bodies like ourselves. And as we do the planning for our new facilities, we could even find out, you know, what is your need versus, you know, if you have a space that you need that we're already doing, let's, let's discuss how we can have, you know, synthesis there. Or if there's a need that we particularly have that, hey, we're not using auditorium or we're not using this all the time, you know, instead of doing our own, perhaps we could use yours. So, I think this is actually a very good time to discuss that in that work session as we're already undergoing that process.
And, and when is that work session scheduled for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, that was part of the work session.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got confused. Us as opposed to the cities.
Yes, yeah, right.
Okay, right, okay.
But we're doing our planning process now with the
Your facilities and infrastructure committee?
Yeah.
I get it, okay. So, yes, I, I agree with you. That would be a good project to undertake under the aegis of, of, of facilities sharing. That makes a lot of sense.
So, Malia, I mean, does this, is this inclusive of sports, like using, joint use of pools, athletic facilities?
I would think so. I mean, again, you know, the taxpayers have paid already to build our facilities, whether they be interior or exterior. Just like they've paid for the meeting rooms at the library or whatever. So, I sort of see them as, as a communal pot that's already been paid for. And therefore, charging each other for cross-use seems somehow redundant. But that's my thinking. I'm not necessarily, again, predetermining the outcome of what the working group would establish.
So, just, and maybe, and maybe you're going to cover this later in the agenda and if you are, that's fine. You can just go to it then. But, you know, what about noticing these meetings? Are they, they obviously need to be transparent and, you know, public needs to be invited?
Yes. I agree.
Okay.
Gail?
Thank you, Malia. I'm wondering if this particular workforce, work group could incorporate some discussion of youth, summer and after-school programs for shared facilities? Because I know our library is really supportive of our after-school programs, but we're, if we could all be in the same room to talk about those things, if that could be part of that particular discussion or if it would belong in a different work group, if, at all?
I think it makes sense. I just was going to, I didn't know if I'm going to be kicking a hornet's nest here, but, you know, I was always puzzled at why I could go to Purvis but not Cumberland without paying a fortune. And I know those are separate tax bases than what the shared school district and library district pay, but, I mean, as, as somebody who had a kid in Canterbury, all her friends went to Cumberland. Every time we went to Jay-Zoo, or, excuse me, it was kind of like going to Jay-Zoo. There were, there were almost nobody that she could swim with or play with. So, I don't know if that's a shared situation or if there's a tier of recreational passes that can be done, but the, the guesting system seems almost like really, like purposefully insular and kind of tribal, so.
Well, just as a, this is in, in response to that, the Cumberland pool does have sort of a limited number of non-resident pool passes that one can purchase. The cost is different. And of course, there are the guest passes on a, on a daily sort of basis. But we do have a limited number and that is probably intentionally vague when it was designed, the word limited. We don't have a specific number of passes that we are restricted to, but if, if you'd like to take a look at that, that's a possibility. I think moving forward, Cleveland Heights is open to creating a different kind of partnership around that. You know, one where we, we share those sorts of things, but the specifics obviously have to be sussed out a bit and the populations of the cities have to be on board with it as well. And that's something that maybe we can start taking a look at with a, a public engagement, sort of, you know, what do you think about this as an idea? Some people will be very interested. Other people will be very interested in us not doing that. So, I think it's important to get that kind of feedback.
I just got a text from our AV and I'm not sure he's got everybody's phone number, but he's asking if we're going to be speaking, make sure the microphone is very, very close to your
Thank you.
Referring to me when I was speaking, but.
Okay, okay, Mr. Posh. I feel like I should chime in with what Mayor Sarin has said here as well. Back in 2019, University Heights did extend an offer generally to create a non-resident pass that was offered at a premium. And there were only a handful of folks that actually took us up on that. And then, when we closed the pool in 2020 with the pandemic and we slowly reopened it, that was something we did not bring back right away. I'm certainly willing to discuss that, revisit how we did that back in 2019. You know, trying to work out, trying to work out certain arrangements, perhaps, whether if we do it in terms of reciprocity or, or, or what have you. The, you know, a lot of the devil is in the details. Mayor Sarin correctly identified that there are going to be folks that are very excited by that idea. There are going to be some folks that don't like that idea at all. We want to be mindful of that. We want to be mindful that, that, you know, there are only so many people that can be in a particular pool facility at a time. I'm going to have a difficult time, either one of our communities would have a difficult time turning away residents from our own community because the pool appears to be full of people who don't live in our community. And, and I don't know how often that would be a problem. Based on the 2019 numbers, it wouldn't seem, based on the way we priced it, that would ever, would have been a problem. But, you know, there's a long history in this country regarding public pools and exclusionary rules that are disguised as, you know, protectionally for other things. And I don't like any of that. You know, all of our taxpayers pay for these facilities. And, and I don't like barriers to entry to them when we already are supporting them with our public dollars. So, you know, the pool fee system, I already find somewhat problematic for those reasons. The, but that said, that said, happy to have a discussion. Not sure what the outcome will be. I, I get requests every year, usually just as the pool season opens, with ideas that may or may not have merit but are far too late to implement for a given pool season. This year was no exception. Perhaps some of those things could be brought up in a working group like this.
And, and if it's something which we work on over the course of, of significant period of time in a working group, then we can have come to some sort of agreement in advance of whatever the following season would be, you know, so that it's not a last-minute request. It's all right, let's do this in a planful way and see what we can do and decide on what we think is appropriate.
Right. I mean, one of, one of the obstacles we have is, is I, I, I think there's a lot of, of, of popular support to the idea that if children go to school together, Canterbury, for instance, because there's a mix of University Heights and Cleveland Heights students there, that they ought to be able to swim together at a pool together. But it's very hard to compile a list of who's actually those students and respect the privacy of the families, the identities of those children. You know, it's not necessarily appropriate to share that information. We get that. So, you know, we find ourselves in a position of, of, you know, do we simply try to establish that somebody is a resident of the other community? Or, you know, do we simply say, well, if you can, like, we took the tack in University Heights, well, you can prove that you live in University Heights, but if you can't, well, then this other rate applies. We don't need to know whether you live in Cleveland Heights or someplace else. Just that if you don't live here or are unable to demonstrate that you live here, this is the rate that applies.
So, this is the sort of work that I would anticipate happening in the working group, like figuring that kind of stuff out? Because there are many permutations.
Malia?
Yes?
I'm going to tie the previous discussion to this one. And I was asked this week by our staff association if the library could work out a deal to use the Rec Center, the Cleveland Heights Rec Center for the employees. So, as a perk of being, of working there, they would like to know if we could either pay a fee to the City of Cleveland Heights or do something that we could allow the staff to use the, that facility.
So, being a resident would not be the requirement, but working for the library system that serves the same community. Again, these are the sorts of synergies that I would love to see us figure out.
President Lewis?
Yes?
I, I would also suggest that one of the easiest things we can do in terms of facilities is making sure we're thinking about, from a community engagement standpoint. I, I know the mayor has been working and thinking about how to take a lot of our community meetings into the community, whereas they're not driving to one central location, but we're bringing the, these events or these meetings to them. And I know that is one helpful way, from the city's standpoint, between the school district and the library, being able to get into, for, for example, the Noble community. You have Oxford, you've got Noble Elementary, you've got Noble Library, plus you've got Monticello Middle School there. And so, it's easier for us to communicate to those residents without them having to find transportation. So, I think as we're thinking about community engagement events and things like that, that is an easy way for us to partner versus them having to go to City Hall or to the community center. It'd be great to have it within walking distance as we're trying to ramp up engagement. So, I think that's also one of those things that we can absolutely do right away, is if we're having these events that have this discussion about the easiest way to get access to the folks in the neighborhoods and the communities. And sometimes that's through shared facilities. So, I would just throw that out there as well.
That's very interesting. Thank you.
Can I just add to that, something that I just did with a, a work program. We had to do like a, what do we call it? Like a assets map. Like who has the rooms, who has the mailing list? We weren't only trading, but that might be something as part of, you know, almost like mapping the perks. What does every organization have to offer if we were to do this like branded workforce development and, and, you know, job fair stuff, but also this, okay, the library has these rooms in these communities, the school, like in this, when is the school open? How late? Who can meet there? So, just kind of almost having like everything mapped out in an inventory might be a nice way to do it.
So, this sounds like Mr. Posh's inventory in, in many ways.
Yep. And I do know that when Cleveland Heights was working on the master plan, Karen Knittle was trying to create an asset map and she might have it, so it might already exist, at least for part of, part of this area.
So, it would be worthwhile to see what we have already begun and then flesh it out and fill in all the gaps?
I have a couple of questions. Do we have people that do not live in Cleveland Heights that work for the City of Cleveland Heights?
Absolutely.
And we have people that do not work in University Heights that work in the City of University Heights?
That do not live in University Heights and
Yes.
Yes, most, most.
So, under
Yeah, and, and, and for what it's worth, we do extend to our own employees in University Heights pool passes, you know, for instance. But that's to the City of University Heights employee.
Well, just for whatever working group handles workforce development and employment, Nancy mentioned that our staff association asked for us to extend to trying, you know, reach an agreement and get that for them. I would only feel it fair, as we all sit here together in this joint meeting, that we would do it for each institution if we were going to move forward on something such as that.
That makes perfect sense, yes. Okay, well, I, I can see that there's a whole lot of very interesting work that can be done in the, both of these two working groups. The third one was diversity, equity and inclusion. Each of our organizations is doing different things around equity and DEI. And it came up that perhaps there's a way of coordinating that or deepening the work by doing it together in certain ways. The high school here, under Dr. Dixon, hosted a very successful Dr. Dixon, hosted a very successful session with the groundwater people that included city employees, library employees, who came for that session. And I don't know that we've had anything joint since then.
We continue to send employees to that, don't we?
I would like to propose that we do a joint session together and focus on power dynamics, and how to navigate DEI in, in those types of relationships when you're having conversations perhaps with your employees, and just how to navigate those.
I would also like to add, I, I think one of the ways we can also partner is through trainings and developments. If, if an organization is bringing in someone, we absolutely want to extend that to the other organizations, to make sure that we're all getting that same information throughout the communities would be extremely helpful as well. So if you're doing something around DEI, it would be great to know that whether we can send staff or ourselves or leaders, I, I think that would absolutely be helpful. That way, if someone's in our community doing that, that great work, we have an opportunity for them to hit more folks than they normally would versus coming into every organization and trying to do it separately. It also will help in terms of building a strategic plan and what that might look like in terms of across our communities as well, if we're hearing what each other's hearing across the table.
Just to add on to that, Anthony, I think that we could pool our resources and bring in somebody awesome.
Absolutely.
So, and even extend it, like, when we bring in an author, like, we had Jason Reynolds, they visit the school, they, they do a session at night, they might have teachers meet them. So, you know, that, if we thought that there was somebody really worthwhile to bring in, or a group worthwhile to bring in, we could, we could join jointly host them.
Absolutely.
Economy of scale.
Right. So that gives us cost sharing, and it also gives us a larger audience and greater impact from that person's visit.
Yeah. And, one second, Dan, I know you want to talk. That reminds me of how we have brought in deaf performers to the community. And the last few have performed here in the high school and also visited the classrooms. And we have deaf services that no one else in the county provides. And so that is just another way that we can share that kind of exposure, and it fits right into the DEI plan. So, we'll keep doing that, but, you know, sky's the limit.
Gabe, was there a specific provider that you're aware of who does that work? Is there some, someone, it seemed like you were sort of talking about something that's been on your mind, and?
I, I don't have anyone in mind who does that specific type of work. I just know that we are all leaders in the community. And sometimes, we have those DEI conversations with others who, you know, for example, at the school, the relationship between, like, the principal and the teacher, you know. So if there are differing views, you know, how do you, as a leader, navigate DEI topics with, you know, individuals who work with you or for you, who report to you?
And, and at the library and at the, I'm not, I don't think we should point to the schools particularly. We all have these issues.
Yeah.
So.
Dan, I can mention, though, I did one with Third Space Action Labs. That was excellent. They do both a groundwater and a two-day intensive. Third Space Action Labs, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
They do the groundwater training.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
They also do a deep dive, yeah.
I can, I can second that. I haven't gone through the training, but the people involved in Third Space, Third Space Action Lab are phenomenal.
Evelyn Burnett is the leader.
I agree. I also have one more question regarding DEI. Just as a community, are we all celebrating Juneteenth in the same manner? For example, are all employees, do they get that day off?
So, back in March, in Cleveland Heights, I introduced and council passed legislation to make Juneteenth a formal holiday in the city of Cleveland Heights. We, you know, obviously, it was on a Sunday this year, and so we had Monday off, with the exception of one bargaining unit with whom we are still in negotiations. But moving forward, I anticipate that all of our employees will have that day off.
Okay. So was that one entity, the sanitation department?
Uh, no, no. We, we, it's, it's our, it's our, so the bargaining units that we have include Local 860, Labor's Local 860, and we're in the middle of negotiations now.
Okay. Well, the reason I brought it up, which I'm sure is partially what Gabe had in mind, she brought it to my attention yesterday, that trash collection ran regular.
Yeah, my apologies. So it includes our refuse and recycling, but is not exclusive to refuse and recycling.
So, make that clear to me. What, what is that saying?
So, those particular functions did not get pushed today because, per the current contract, that day is not included in the list of holidays in the contract.
Okay. So, hopefully, in the future, it will be? Is that what you're saying?
My goal, and the goal of the council, was to make it a formal holiday in the city of Cleveland, that would apply, Cleveland Heights, that would apply to all of our employees.
Unions would have to.
Now, of course, we're in the negotiation process, so that's, it's not something I get to decide unilaterally, so.
Yeah. Just to fill in, after President Biden and, and the federal government recognized Juneteenth as a federal holiday, we were already in the midst of negotiations with FOP, IAF, and Labor's 860. So we had the advantage of being in those negotiations right then, and we were close to a deal with all of them. So, it was one more thing we were able to bring up as almost a, an enticement, that how would you like to have one more city holiday off? And everybody jumped at it. In fact, for what it's worth, I believe 860 may have even requested it initially before it was a federal holiday in one of their opening bids, so it was opening supposals. So it was a, it was a, it was something we were able to revisit and bring back. And, once we had it in our CBAs, council also took it up and made it a city holiday. So that happened this year. So, similarly, the holiday was observed on Monday, the 20th, because if a federal holiday, like the Fourth of July or Juneteenth, falls on a Sunday, it's celebrated on Monday, but falls on Saturday, it's celebrated on Friday. And, and, you know, next year, it'll be on a Monday. So the holiday itself will be on a Monday, the observance presumably will also be on Monday, because typically, we celebrate the Fourth of July on the Fourth, that Independence Day, and this Independence Day, I presume, going forward, will always be celebrated on the 19th. So.
Right. And the school district added Juneteenth as a paid holiday in all of the contracts for those who are under contract in the summer. Sorry. So anybody who is an employee during the summer has that as a paid holiday. And we finished four rounds of negotiations without actually going into negotiation, and that went for all bargaining units.
Yeah. I don't think I'm giving anything away when I say that Labor's 860 represents our refuse and service employees as well. I mean, that they're one of the same in, in our city. And, and ultimately, they agreed to that as a holiday in their CBA. And our trash collection was postponed today as a city holiday, and also, they all had that day off as well. So.
Yeah. So I just, again, want to reiterate and have it, you know, I certainly understand that it did not meet the timeframe that you guys were negotiating, and that you guys are still negotiating it. I want to bring it to a level of something that needs to get done, because we convene here, and we talk about many things, right? It shouldn't be acceptable to any of us that, that holiday not be observed to the equal level as any of our other holidays.
Well, let me please interject and make it very clear that this council and this mayor does not need convincing.
Okay. I mean, I didn't think so, but, you know, when you, when you spoke on the negotiations, which is fine, I just wanted to emphasize and have you guys know as you step away, that that should be something really pressed for, because we could convene here again in October, right? And that not have occurred, and then it'll kind of be, so, again, my speaking up on it is not just for our community, but overall, as we speak on diversity, equity, and inclusion, that I don't want to see that one, you know what I'm saying, not get the respect and the level that it deserves as all. And, again, we come here and we're trying to get things done, and we're, you know, four groups working together. I just want to make sure that we're taking action on things and not just, you know, meeting and talking about it, et cetera. So, I just wanted to emphasize it, because it was only brought to my attention yesterday.
I can, I can help you rest assured.
Thank you.
The city of Cleveland Heights is proud to celebrate Juneteenth in a robust way, and we are proud, frankly, and I'm speaking maybe for four of us up here, proud black people who are extremely interested in making sure that Juneteenth is given the respect that it deserves. After 150 years, it's finally a federal holiday, and immediately, it's a holiday in Cleveland Heights, too, and we give it that due respect.
Thank you. Can I just say thank you to Cleveland Heights for agreeing to close down Coventry Road to celebrate Juneteenth for the first time since we had trouble 12, 13 years ago. Since we had trouble 12, 13 years ago, I saw that as a great recognition that those days are behind us, and we welcome all people to our community, just like we say we do on our, on our banners.
So the last topic for a working group is something which each of us has been working on diligently for a while now, which is food insecurity. And we're all running food pantries and produce giveaways and delivering meals to street corners with school buses, et cetera, et cetera. This is something that's not going away. You know, we may think that COVID is done, but there are other reasons for food insecurity to prevail, unfortunately. I mean, inflation is, is a little insane right now, and the cost of basic necessities is rising rapidly. So there's no end in sight for the need for supplemental food. And that's something which I think the four organizations can work together to benefit everyone in our community. If we come up with a way of coordinating things, figuring out how we want to continue the work we've been doing, alter it, improve it, whatever. I can tell you that families in the school district just received, what is it, 190, slightly more, $191 as the first payment to, on their EBT cards for all children who are enrolled in CHOH public schools. Because anybody who attends our schools qualifies for SNAP assistance through our universal grant for free breakfast and lunch. So they're getting money to cover food during the summer while school is out. There will be a second payment of the same amount, so it's like $190 twice.
That's almost 400 for the summer.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I didn't know if you were.
Anyway, so this is, I mean, there, this is real. The need is there. It is acute. What we have done, each of us as organizations, has been amazing, but we can't stop. And so in order to continue, I think it's worth creating a working group so that we can address this in the future.
I would recommend, along those lines, there, there are several things you can do to combat this. I know the language is changing. Many of our nonprofit organizations are still calling it a food desert. One of the initiatives that we worked on in my church in East Cleveland and in the north side of Cleveland Heights is creating what's called a food map. And so it's a way of ensuring not only is a meal available for children and for adults, but available every day at certain times. And so what we've been doing is partnering both with the school districts, with the city of East Cleveland, and with our religious institutions and other nonprofits to say, hey, we know you're feeding folks, but when? What are you offering? Is it, is it a hot meal? Is it produce? What, what does that look like? That way, we can map that out for the community. So not only do they know they can get a meal every day, but they can know what type, where to go across multiple communities. And it helps create that wraparound approach. And so I think that's something that we can absolutely do as organizations, because what we don't, what was happening in, in our church, and the reason that we helped to develop this, was we were feeding folks, and it was, seemed great till we realized that four churches were feeding folks at the same day, at the same time. And then it was leaving humongous gaps in between. And so now, we've been able to make those adjustments to make sure that there are no gaps now. So I, I think that that's one of the things that we can do. If you create something like that, each of us can put it on the website. We can blast that out. And that way, a parent has those options across cities, across organizations, to be able to get what they need. And with so many of us having farmers markets, and, again, food pantries, and then you have churches who are also getting thousands of dollars with the food in every, every, every week, sometimes every month, I, I think that that would be a great approach, so that someone has that map to say, in my community, I know, if it's a hot meal I need, or fresh produce that I'm preparing, maybe for the holidays or something like that, I know where I can go to, to provide those things. Because there are several churches and organizations in Cleveland Heights, and we're already starting to see some overlap. So we're kind of readjusting our schedule so that we can hit that. And I want, I bring that up because the school district has played a tremendous role in helping us to fill in that gap, because it's allowed us to shift over meals in many of the nonprofit agencies, because they're taken care of in the summertime and during the school day. So it's allowed us to kind of shift our resources. But to know what everyone else is doing across the cities would be a huge win for everyone.
I think that's, that's the, the equivalent of an asset map for shared facilities would be to have
Madam President.
Some sort of large spreadsheet of what everybody's doing, so we can adjust to make it more useful for the community.
I'm.
Ms. Weiss, and then Mr. Sarin.
Yeah, no, thank you. I just want to, first of all, I do want to thank the school district. They've been a leader in terms of, you know, food scarcity and how to get that to, to the students. I know that, just for the benefit of this group, many, many non-publics have actually done that staggered approach to make sure that the students are receiving the foods at different times. And this is throughout Cleveland Heights and University Heights. I know they're working on that right now. And, and the city of University Heights has also actually budgeted a significant amount of money to go to food pantries shortly. So, we're proud of that as well.
Can I add something on, for the PEBT?
Wait, Khalil?
Mr. Sarin first, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, in addition to sort of the asset mapping, I think we can maybe hopefully do one better than a spreadsheet and, and maybe use our GIS mapping capabilities at the city.
It exists. The Food Bank has, the Greater Cleveland Food Bank has it all mapped.
Okay.
So, we would just need to talk to their, any, well, let me say it this way.
Specifically in our area, if we were to put together something?
Right. Anyone affiliated with them, because there are other sources, they're, they have the whole four county region mapped with every single source.
So it might be that we could add some layers.
Yeah.
And, and specifically what I was thinking about, different sources of maybe a hot meal might have different requirements for who walks in and can access those things.
Right.
And, and so some might be for children and not for adults, so on and so forth. And so we might have different layers to achieve a more efficient way to find what you need and what you're eligible for.
Right. Ms. Carlin?
So the, the new P, the PEBT cards that have gone out, I know they surprised a lot of parents. And parents have thrown away the cards, and wait, what is this? Why are we getting this? And I explained, it was kind of the summer re-up they were doing. This is also the first time, they've been working on this since the beginning of the pandemic, that children under the age of six are going to be covered. So, I guess I'd bring up two problems. One is communication, because I know that, you know, two days after I stop, parents see money show up, we got the communication about, hey, your student now has this, and here's why. But there are soon to be students that live in our community that qualify by, you know, income eligibility, that need to know. So that might be the communications piece. I mean, I know, obviously, the federal government is responsible for, you know, the FAQs and all of that. Actually, probably Ohio will do more of it. But if we can do what we can to let people know this is available to them, especially for very young children, I think that could be, that, you know, I, I love the idea of the mapping and the long term, but, like, this money's going to be there now. So to kind of help people get through the summer, I think would be really, really good.
If I could. It seems to me that, that we literally, as we're all working at these sites and we're distributing food, it seems that one of the basic things that we might be distributing, in addition to the food, is literally a calendar. Paper, calendar.
Yep.
Because the folks are here, they're in this area on this day, let's give them the information that they need for the, for the near future. Here's what's going to be available. I mean, that, to me, just seems a real sort of baseline. Also, I think, if we could consider all of us giving information about vaccines, when, when vaccines are going to be available, where vaccines will be available, especially now. When, when vaccines are going to be available, where vaccines will be available, especially now as the availability keeps dropping in age. I think that that's going to be valuable information. I just saw that Sesame Street did an amazing short video. And then, of course, voter registration.
I, I would agree strongly with that. There's, there's two things that we do every time someone gets a meal from our church. The first thing we do is we give them resources in a bag from other agencies that may not be there. And that's a perfect time for the school district and cities to connect. The second thing we do is make sure that they're registered to vote. If not, we try to get that information in a way that's not so intrusive that they feel like we're trying to track everything about them, because that's one of those barriers when you're trying to feed folks is knowing. Where you get to the point where you're having to hand out an idea thing, you've immediately put up a wall. But handing out any other resources that you can in partnership with that is also a huge, a huge thing. So if your community, if your city's doing an event or the school district's doing an event, and we know that they're hitting these areas, that's just something we can handle on their way out the door, and they can look at when they get home. So that's also another way to, to meet a huge group of folks that may not have access to internet as well, where you're giving them that information. So I love that idea. And if we all know and plan that in, in advance, you can pre-do those packets, do, or do a bag of information, and spread it out every so often throughout the city, through those agencies.
So when you get eight pounds of zucchini, you also have all that important information as well.
And it, it may have summer programming and to, to, all, all kinds of things, you know, it's just a great idea.
We call the nice lady on Severn Road who helps us distribute all the food in the Orthodox community through methods that are magical, and it all gets used up. But I did want to mention the Kosher Food Bank.
Yes.
Which should be a partner in this. The Family to Family Collaborative, which offers wraparound services and tries to promote all the services available in our community so people don't have to leave to get what they need. Should be a partner in this. And of course, the Food Bank or another, any other hunger organization that is willing to work with us.
And all of our hospitals also have kits and things they hand out to help folks with healthy eating and things like that. In fact, Metro Hospital came out with a booklet as we were handing out free food. They have books to show you how to prepare healthy meals and things like that. So there's a variety of resources you can do.
Right. And the library has been promoting culinary literacy for a couple of years. And with the construction we're doing at Coventry and at Noble, there'll be a kitchen in each of those branches. At University Heights, they use carts, kitchen carts. We teach young ones how to prepare food and older people how to prepare food. We bring in the Ohio Cooperative Extension Service, which offers free classes and all of that, too. And we have gardens at every branch to grow food. And I know you, you, the schools do, too. And so, I mean, I think as a community, we maybe could eliminate some of this problem for, for our own residents.
I think to. Use your microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There's so many people and so many agencies that is giving out food and distributing food and distributing information. And I do like the idea of what Dan said versus having a, a calendar where there is something on every single day where a, a parent or someone can go to get the food, or where it's different locations in their community where they can go. Because, I mean, it's, it's just phenomenal of how many churches, how many schools. I mean, the schools give breakfast, lunch, and dinner every day. They take them to the, the, the students. So it's so many things that's happening, and people are trying to feed all of our communities. I think basically having a, a calendar where all of those things are listed, that provides information, I think that would help a lot of our communities.
Devita, I think that is absolutely a library job. I mean, written all over it. So I'll volunteer to.
I hear you're volunteering here.
Yes, I'm volunteering to help create the calendar and distribute it in some sort of electronic way so everybody could hand it out. And we'll figure out how to do that after I go home and they yell at me for volunteering.
And you're right about partnering with the Food Bank, because they have, they do.
They have all, they have so much data.
Yes, they do.
Right. Well, the Food Bank collects data at each of our elementary giveaways so that they know who they're serving. And, you know, they ask whether or not you have a child in the building. It's not a requirement. They ask whether you have people over the age of 60 in your household, whether you have children under 18 in your household, and how many people you're feeding. And then, you know, Dan, Jody, and I, I mean, we've all done this. And then you hand a large box of produce to the person and put it in their car. And so that data obviously is being collected for something and.
And I think that can be added to your calendar, hot meals.
Right.
Where they get actually hot meals versus someone, you know, getting a box of food as well. And I know a lot of people, especially a lot of the seniors, are looking for hot meals as well.
Right.
So, and I know our community, because our community center provides information regarding hot meals as well. So that's something that could be added to your calendar.
Well, anybody who knows anything who's in hearing distance of this meeting can send me an email with their lists, and I will just pass it off to someone who's better at this than I am.
This is one of the areas where our shared facilities become important, too, because, you know, I just heard we're putting food in people's cars. What about people who don't have cars? And they're the people who need the food the most. And they can't always get to a location. I know, you know, when I'm handing food out for, you know, the Food Bank, or when I'm leaving, I've often taken boxes to people I knew who couldn't get there.
Right.
So that's another need that we have to keep in mind, that, you know, some of our neediest folks in our community can't get there to get the food. How do we get it to them?
I would also suggest if you do a calendar, to possibly do it maybe monthly. Because anything, like you mentioned, you know, schedules change often, so you wouldn't want to have any, you know, misinformation there.
Yeah, well, I know that the Food Bank also prepare hot meals, but that would be good to have a location in our community where, where they can receive hot meals. And I think just from the four of us in our facilities, in one of our facilities, maybe we can provide that.
Well, we'll, maybe we'll identify some holes. Either a day or a space that, that isn't getting anything, and maybe that will be an outcome of this.
Or hotline.
Right. Right.
Madam President. Okay, so we've now established that these four topics are huge, and there's a lot of meat to all of them. The next thing I'm going to want to do after Mr. Sarin speaks is, is get one person from each of the four entities onto each of the four working groups, a minimum, so that each of our interests and expertises can be represented at the table. Mr. Sarin.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Director Levin for introducing me. I just took a look at the Food Bank's mapping function, and I encourage everybody to take a look at that. There are some, I think some holes in what they are aware of as, as food, you know, food pantries and that and the like. And so maybe we can create a partnership with the Food Bank to make sure that their map is up to date, and that's the map that we can use as we create our calendar.
I think it depends on where the source is, because there are other, the, the FDA gives food. The Hunger Network gives food. I mean, it just depends on where you're getting it. So we can, we can take theirs and then, like you suggested, overlay anybody that's missing on that, and then figure out where we have need.
Okay. Everybody take 10 seconds to decide which of these four topics floats your boat. Workforce development and employment, facilities sharing public resources, joint work on D E I, and community food insecurity. I don't have any posted notes. I don't.
Patty? Do you know what you want to do?
And it doesn't necessarily need to be your area of greatest expertise, but the one that you care about enough to do the work, which is what I tell my young adults all the time. You got to find something you care enough that you're willing to put in the work.
Get now?
D E I. Okay, so. We're just going to go around clockwise here from me. Facilities. And food. Okay, University Heights.
Actually, Madam President, if we could, before we get started, I, I wanted to point out that it, it's likely that the, the mayors and possibly the superintendent and director may have to be involved in some way in all of these. So when it comes to the membership of the boards, that might be one thing, but the mayors have to, will likely have to be involved in, in all of them to some degree or another.
Well, then we'll have to schedule very carefully, won't we? Thank you.
And I'd also like to point out sunshine law, that we couldn't really have more than three of my board members on one committee and that. And I'm sure the board and the city councils need to be cognizant of, you know, how it's split up so we don't end up having to advertise and get bigger spaces or open up Zoom and things like that, so.
And we have several council people who aren't here.
We have several people who are missing.
Right.
So.
So we get to assign them.
Well, yes.
I thought I would.
They do chair those committees, don't they, if they're not here?
Yes. It might not be fair to make them chair, per se, but, okay. So workforce development and employment. Is there anybody from University Heights who is particularly interested in that? Don't all raise your hands at once.
As Mayor Sarin said, I, I'm going to need to be involved in all four of these. If, if, if there was one that gave way, it might be this one, not because it isn't important, but because if I had to triage them. But, but I, I think I need to sit on all four of these, just as Mayor Sarin was saying.
Should we perhaps? Should we perhaps let the four groups kind of go back and then report after having some internal discussions and divide this work up instead of necessarily?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Heinz, I think that's right.
Okay.
We all have some folks that are, that are missing. I'm sure Mayor Weiss, I think he'd probably, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Weiss, I think he'd probably would want to confer, especially with the two that, that couldn't be here tonight.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Now, our next meeting as a large group is scheduled for Wednesday, the 26th of October. I would want to make sure that each of the four, four working groups has had a chance to achieve something so that we can come back with the first level of hooray for all of us.
Four months. They should.
There should be enough time. But in order for the four groups to coalesce, I'm going to need to hear back from everybody. Shall we say?
By Labor Day?
Yeah.
Or at least earlier, maybe, August something.
Maya, might I suggest that between the president's mayors and library director, that each one of you say that this is going to be your committee? And then that way, when I have this on our library board agenda for Tuesday night, then we could report back to, okay, if you're doing workforce development, here's my library board members. If the mayor's doing D E I, I can report back to them. So maybe if you four are the point people, then once we get our councils and boards together.
Maybe that we could do tonight.
We could, we could contact you to say, okay, here's, here's where all the library people are going and let the four of you know as chairs of those committees.
Can, can I also maybe tack on to that? And, you know, when, we all take turns of being the president of, for example, the school board, and that is a heavy lift. Just like I know the mayors and the library director also, those are heavy lift. So I think it would almost make sense that there's like a chairman of the group of each one of these four groups that would be responsible for reporting out. And I think you almost need to have more than just like one person per organization. So I don't think, I mean, were you envisioning like four people involved in each one of these, or?
Well, I would like a minimum of four people, but I would hope that there's more than, you know, one person from each organization involved just because we want to have a, you know, a broader range of points of view.
I mean.
Otherwise, I could go in and dictate what the school district has to say about subject X, because I'm the only person there, right?
It, it would also seem logical that some of these, it might make sense to have certain staff members to be part of these groups. So for example, the cities have rec departments, and you have a rec director. And if you're talking about facilities, you may want to have someone from the rec department be on that committee. And this may help not necessarily having, you know, one of the mayors, actually, because you have representative from your staff who could report back to you.
I think from, from my perspective, it's, two comments on, on this. I think that it will likely be necessary to delegate some of that from, from, you know, on a daily basis. I, I may be pulled in a million different directions, and so I, I may likely have to delegate some of that. But additionally, I, I wanted to make sure, under our system, everybody knows that I, I don't think that it would be my place to dictate or, or even influence how the council determines it wants to, you know, separate itself into these working groups. That would be up to the council to decide, and, and I, I wouldn't play a role in that.
Well, my suggestion was, we don't want to have 40 people say to Malia, here's who wants to be in the group. We could just designate a point person to say, okay, I'm going to get the list of who wants to be on the D E I committee, and then I'll contact those people. And then once we come up with a meeting, then, you know, maybe on the facilities one, somebody's rec director might want to be the chair of the committee, but it's well represented. It's just like, I don't want to inundate one person with 40 different people contacting them to say, these are the committees that we want to be on.
So then we would need a chairperson.
For each committee.
For each of the four working groups from those of us who are here. And that chairperson then has to go and make sure that you get the other organization's people.
Right. And then once that, once the group is formed, you could bow out of it. But I mean, we don't want to funnel it through just one person to inundate them.
Correct.
That's what I'm.
I don't have the bandwidth.
Right.
You're absolutely right.
Right. You know, the mayors might want to be or not want to be on each committee, but to have, you know, them get a list from their council people to then be able to send to the three other people that are heading up committees initially.
They would volunteer, would not be assigned.
Right.
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 Right. Okay. I, I, I think that is a better approach. So then I need four chairs, four chairpeople.
I have no problem chairing community food insecurity. It's my day job.
It's your day job. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Maddens. And going backwards then, D E I.
Dana, you were expressing an interest?
I would be fine, but I would prefer a co-chair.
I'd be willing to co-chair with Dana.
Go library.
Okay. All right, so we got two co-chairs there. Facilities, Joint Resources. Any takers? Oh, wait.
Okay, I'll, I'll do one.
And then workforce development and employment, which is a biggie unless we figure out how to make it make sense so that it's not huge.
You keep looking at me.
Devita, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, I was looking at Devita, too.
Because I know it's in your bailiwick.
There, there are three people from the library board who are not here tonight, and maybe one of them would be interested, but I don't want to volunteer anyone who's.
But you need to ask, obviously.
Yeah.
So perhaps one of those people would be interested in co-chairing with Ms. Russell?
Maybe, Annette. Would that make sense? Okay.
I thought Max makes sense.
I did, too.
I, I would, but my, my, my time commitment is limited at this time.
Okay.
It is also my day job, but.
So then our four workgroups have leaders. And each of our org- So then our four work groups have leaders, and each of our organizations will send those leaders, the names of the people who are interested in pursuing those particular topics.
Ms. Lewis, can you send us their email addresses so the four leader, the four leaders?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will.
And we're going to flip that. I'm going to be the co-chair and she's going to be the chair.
If we can talk someone into it.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Well, you can both be co-chairs.
Yes, well, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know before we-
Got it. But Nancy will check first because she's not actually assigning any-
I'll do it with you, and then if Annette wants to, I'll, okay? So if Annette doesn't, I will, okay?
Okay.
Got it.
Got it, all right.
So, Malia?
Then we'll have to-
Yes, Jim?
Would the school district, as just an exception, just knowing how long it takes committees to get organized, it seems to me that the job fair item that Anthony brought up is pretty critical on our radar.
All right, that's-
Is there something that we can do just sort of outside of these committees?
No problem.
Try to get that together sooner than later?
We can do it.
We got it.
We got it. We'll get it done.
You'll get it done.
All right.
I love hearing that sort of thing.
By October 26th, it'll at least be planned and maybe done, okay?
Wow.
Love it.
See, this is how we make the world a better place. Thank you.
And can I add, just another chore for you ladies, is we spoke on it, but previous, at our last meeting, but we didn't really touch on it this evening, the police force and the need to draw in the equity and diversity there. And I know we have the new police chief, and I really would love to see us finding a way, both in workforce development and in the, of course, the DEI, to, you know, get, what is it, Captain Britton?
Chief Britton.
Chief Britton, to get him out there more. You know, I see he does his things, but I'm not seeing that much attendance yet. But I just think we have resources that if we have him at events and, you know, have some availability where we're getting the public to know him, that we have, we could just start this off so much better than, you know, waiting on down the road, so.
You gonna help us? You gonna help us?
Absolutely.
Just as an FYI-
Well, she's on DEI, so we'll-
As an FYI, we did have a meet the chief event. Of course, it was timed to coincide with an extremely hot day in the recent past.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. I see he does them, and you guys were doing them before. I just wanted to say, let's do something to put him more out there, so.
If you need air-conditioned facilities that aren't city facilities, lean in. I mean, you know, if you need a room-
I'm actually reaching out for you for something. Very specific.
Library, too. Okay, I will email the chairs with a summary, as much as I could write, of what each of the working groups is interested in tackling. And I will email, remind me what you asked for. I'm sorry, it's gone.
If you could just email the group, the chairs' names, so each, you know, each group can-
With contact information.
Can tell them their choices for working groups.
I think that the idea of a job fair and having information about a job fair for our October meeting is fantastic, but I think that all four of our organizations have staffing needs that can't wait.
Well, give us, give us a day.
Yeah, I just think if we can, if we can just find a way to amplify and share out current availability, et cetera, you know, let's do some good for each other.
I know where to find your openings, I think, for the cities and for the school district. I can go to your websites and find your openings that are up there. If you have others, if you would send them to Davida and I, just even just a list, just for, just to get an idea of how many positions we're talking about, then that will help us figure out how big it has to be. I am reminded that we did a team job fair at the library way back when, and we had about 20 vendors that had jobs, and 300 people showed up.
Wow.
So we had, they were lined up out the door. So we will have to not oversell what's available either, so we'll have to figure that out.
That's good. So we have short-term needs, and then we have long-term, big fat job fair. Okay.
Okay, just for some clarity, Malia, so the-
Clarity.
Yes. So the chairs will assign who's on these committees?
No, no.
No, we're all volunteering and letting the chairs know which ones are people who want to be on.
We're going to, the chairs, I'm going to let everyone know who the chairs of each of the four working groups are, so that then we can choose which groups we want to join. And we will send ourselves to the chairs. So I need to create a big fat joint mailing list instead of what I've been doing in the past. What I've been doing is sending things to the mayors and the council presidents and expecting it to get disseminated, but what I'll do is probably just create a big fat list with everybody.
Have you thought about like a Google Drive or something, where it's just everyone goes to it rather than having to put it out?
Yeah, but that's beyond my skill set.
We have people for that.
We have people for that. You know, no, the one board meeting I missed three years ago was the Google training, just saying. And it's been haunting me ever since.
We can help you with that, too. Here's the list.
We have classes.
You have classes, I know, but I got to put it in my calendar. Okay.
I'm just teasing.
All right, good. I'm sure it's sitting on my dining room table. Okay, so I will do that within the next week. I will send out the contact information for each of the four group chairs, and then everybody will have that information, and then we'll be able to self-sort, no sorting hat and public required. I will also, under, in a separate email, type up a summary of what I think, and this is just me, because I'm taking my notes, so I'm sure there's other things that could be of interest as well, a summary of what each of the work, working groups is, wants to tackle. And then we will let it run. It is not my job to micromanage anybody except for my kids, so.
And they're getting kind of big.
Yeah, and they don't come home anymore because, you know-
You micromanaged them too much.
Oh, is that it? Yeah, you should see the text messages from my son this afternoon. So they, they only communicate when they need something.
Yep.
Thank you all. This has been extraordinarily productive, and I know it's difficult to try to keep this many topics in the air at once, but this, I mean, just the amount of useful information and the depth of thought is really good for tonight, and I'm very grateful that you went along with this new plan. So we all agree that we're meeting as a large group Wednesday, the 26th of October, and if we can't do it in the rec center, we can maybe do it here again, but it depends on the schedule for things like, oh, concerts, plays, musicals, the things that usually happen on this stage. So I'm not-
They'll be way into the musical, like, it'll be a week or two before. I would not plan on this stage.
Okay, it won't be here.
Oh, they have a set filled here, yeah.
So if we can't do it at the rec center, we could do it in the cafeteria, but the acoustics are terrible, and that's why I didn't want to do it there. So we'll figure that out, but maybe by then we'll have a massive spreadsheet of all our common resources, and we can do it somewhere else.
Or one of our middle-
I believe it's only the city of Cleveland Heights that has a restriction on location, right? That's why we can't do it at Wiley?
We've got middle schools from the council space.
We have middle schools in the city of Cleveland Heights, so we could, if necessary, do it at Monty or Rocksmid if we can't do it at the rec center. Okay, so we have options.
And if there were students who could at least run the recording and the microphones, that's what, we don't, we don't have the setup, so if, we would have the space but not the setup.
Right, but bringing equipment in is complicated from here.
Right, I think that was the problem with the city, too.
Right, I mean-
Hey, maybe there's a local business that we could support.
Hmm, takes a lot of gear to get this many microphones going.
Yeah.
All right, well, we've got three months to sort that out, so I'm not going to worry about it just yet.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you very much for indulging me in this. I need a motion to adjourn from-
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, closing remarks?
Do you guys?
Do we have any closing remarks?
Oh, you just made them.
It's not. Maybe you just made them.
I, I don't know. I mean, I didn't have that as a separate object.
It's on the agenda.
Well, it's on the board doc's agenda, but it's not on the one I printed out. So I don't know.
There you go.
Our library trustees in favor of adjourned? Aye. Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn for the school board?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Heinz?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz, yes. Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Serini?
Yes. We know.
Okay, University Heights, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Gould, Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Dr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.